Okay. And like to call meeting to order? Would you like to call a vote?
Thank you. Commissioner Lamb?
Present.
Vice Chair Whitmer?
Present.
Commissioner Sokoloff?
Here.
And Commissioner Tanelli is excused and Commissioner Lane will be late.
All right. I guess the first thing tonight is public comments on items that are not on the agenda for this evening. There any comments? If not, then we can move on to the approval of the minutes. Does anybody have comments on the minutes?
I move, I, I, I did, I would find it a bit so I saw.
Minor spelling error in air. That was all right.
Oh, I see.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay.
I move with these other, other than the titles.
And I second.
Motion passes? Oh, no, we have to vote. Yes, vote. Aye. So motion passed? First hearing is on the special structures permit for 25 Isabella.
Good evening, Commissioners. The first item before you is a request for a special structures permit to allow an increase in the main building height for proposed new residence at 25 Isabella. The subject site is an interior lot located in R1A zoning district, just under two acres in lot area, with existing trees and vegetation around the perimeter of the property. The requested special structures permit is to allow the main building to be built at approximately thirty-one feet four inches, sixteen inches over the maximum allowed overall building height of thirty feet in the R1A zone. It is important to note that the applicant's engineer has determined that the subject property may be subject to flood inundation and thus has recommended a raised pad. Atherton Municipal Code allows for the building height to be dimensioned from the new pad grade as opposed to the average natural grade. The applicant has shown this new height dimension on the project plans. In order to grant the special structures permit for the increased height, the required front, side, and rear yard setbacks shall be increased at a ratio of five feet for every one foot increase in building height. The applicant has increased setbacks on all sides of the building by seven feet six inches, which would allow the overall main building height to extend eighteen inches above the pad grade. However, the requested sixteen inch height increase with the current design would only require six feet six inch increase in setbacks, but the applicant has exceeded this minimum required setback increase by one foot. The planning commission may grant a special structures permit if three findings in the staff report can be made. As previously mentioned, the applicant has met the increased setbacks to allow an increase in main building height. The existing and proposed landscape screening will help to visually screen the building and the applicant will be required to submit a landscape screening plan to the satisfaction of the town arborist. Staff has not received any neighborhood, neighbor comments or inquiries on the project. Based on these reasons, staff is supportive of the special structures permit. I'm available for any questions and the applicant is also here as well. Thank you.
You have any questions?
I have another question.
Okay, I have a question. It seems that there's a basement that's gonna hold utility equipment, so a lot of power coming into it. And it seems to be somewhat inconsistent with being in a flood zone. And I was wondering, are there any rules or standards regarding basements in a flood zone?
First to clarify, we do not have a flood zone. The property is subject to inundation, so it is subject to flooding. But we do not have any, yeah, minor point. We do not have any regulations regarding putting a basement in areas subject to inundation. We can have the architect, I think, answer that and I appreciate getting that question ahead of time. Especially with basements used for utilitarian purposes, there's a lot of things they could do. And sometimes the basement's designed like a ship, so it is, it can be waterproofed. Or they can have, you know, some sump pumps in there and some drains, where it would be difficult to have that same situation on the first floor. It's much more difficult to kind of waterproof and, and deal with that first floor. So we will have the architect, though, better respond to that for you. Thank you.
Okay, that's the only question I have.
You're good.
So.
So, good evening and thanks for being here. Thanks for the question in advance as well. My name is Steve Borlik of Young and Borlik Architects and we're presenting a design for a California Tudor. It's including the garage and a secondary dwelling unit. It is fifteen thousand one hundred and sixty-eight square feet above grade. There are seven bedrooms total. There's, there's no finished basement. There is a mechanical basement, as you pointed out. The special structure permit that we're asking for is for height and you mentioned the, the codes already, so I won't quote those. But this is the old site of the Watkins Carton House that was removed and relocated in nineteen ninety-eight. So, you know, I don't know if that demolition left this site, you know, lower after removal of Hardscape or anything else happened over there. It's unclear to us and we weren't really able to determine that. But over the past years, I suppose maybe with respect to that demolition, the towns held a balance of replacement trees. So we now owe between six to eight, depending on size and species. We, we do have an extensive new screening plan and we're proposing at a ninety-six inch box as well as two thirty-six inch box oaks as part of our landscape plan and we'll easily, we'll easily make up the balance that we're owed on the rest of the screening. With respect to how we place this house on the property, the factors really include the Winchester Drive across Isabella, this average natural grade discussion with the increased setbacks, and entry orientation and relationship to the street and property lines and how you, how you want to square up to the street and the backyard, as well as, you know, the benefits of a front yard and a rear yard and driveway, all weighed into the overall design. So it's got a nice private backyard. There's ample off-street guest parking and, and we have five garage spaces. So specifically with respect to the height, we did have our civil engineer work with David Quinn to set the height at ninety-seven point three two, which is seven inches above the otherwise calculated average natural grade of ninety-six point seven three. So with, with respect to the increased setbacks, we are proportionately one foot increased in height for five feet increase in setback. And all of our setbacks comply with the minimums. Only the front is really at that minimum. The right side is sixty-five, which is, which is two hundred percent of the, of the required minimum. The left side is ninety-two, which is more than five times. The back isn't really worth talking about. And at the front, it's really only the one-story entry, which is at that seven and a half foot minimum. The rest of the house, the entire facade is at ten. So the, with the exception of our front entry, the front setback is actually seventy feet, which is twenty, so, yeah, ten, ten feet further than the sixty feet required. So we're, we're saying that with this seven and a half foot setback, it would translate to a sixty, sixty-seven and a half feet would translate to a foot and a half of maximum allowable increase. But I also wanted to point out, in our elevations, we've shown you there is a hatched area and a dimension at the top of our building and all of the visible peaks and ridges are only seven inches above the thirty feet. The, the rest is nearly invisible height that is developed as the roof section slopes back and you put skylights in there. So it's, so it's really not gonna be perceived as a thirty-one foot plus high house. So we're also raising the grade around the perimeter from ninety-six point seven to ninety-seven, which has a, which has a, an effect in reducing the exposed height of the building. I'd point out, we're not asking for any increased sidewall heights, which could be entitled to under the, under the same increased height ordinance. We, we don't have a habitable basement. Yes, we do have some mechanical spaces and, you know, you, you have to balance the concerns of development with flooding. We have, I mean, I've got a project on Elena currently under construction with a fully finished basement. We took advantage of the, the similar ability to, to raise the building a little bit, but it's subject to similar flooding from the same creek system, you know. So as, as an owner of a property, you do make some, you make some judgment decisions about what you're willing to risk when you, when you develop any kind of a basement, especially near a creek. But this is only, this is only mechanical equipment and it's, it's not, it's not habitable space. So we, we don't even have any egress problems, as far as that goes. We have not asked for any reduced setbacks, which might go with our second living unit. And I think it's an efficient massing. It could be said that a design with more sprawling wings that are brought all the way out to the more traditional or normal setbacks, as is, as is, you know, common and proper in design and done around here, could have a larger impact to the perceived mass than, than this design does. And I think it's an attractive and appropriate application of the allowances for increased setbacks and increased height. So I am more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, as I mentioned before, my concern was the basement with a lot of power in the area that could be prone to inundation. And, you know, are there standards or?
Not in that, yeah, unless it's a flood zone, there are not. There are not. Now, what's down there really is air handlers. None of our main electric service is in there. It's just air handlers. So you're talking about furnace zones. And, you know, when it gets under, when it goes underwater, you gotta throw it away. That's, that's part of the game you play, yeah.
How far is it from the, from the creek? How far is that?
Oh, that's a great question.
Three hundred feet?
Yeah, let's see.
Three fifty?
It's, it's probably about, well, the, the house is a hundred and fifty feet, so the basement's a little further than that.
I mean, a hundred and fifty feet's a long way.
Yeah.
Any, any stronger than that, that would come down that channel?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we're lower than the street. The, the, the street elevation is ninety-nine. So the, the, the creek bank elevation is the ninety-six, I think it's ninety-six, three, two? Yeah. So we're, you know, our raised pad is only seven inches above what the average natural grade is. And, and we're not asking for all the possible benefit of the increased setbacks. Plus, we're trying to offer to be really conservative with the fact that we're measuring to the top of skylight curves and things you don't always see.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay. Do you want to make any comments?
This seems very fair and logical to me. I have no problem with it. I mean, we've done a number of homes in the area and I don't know that we've ever done something quite like this relative to a potential for flooding, but I think you've been very fairly blunt setbacks for your size. Are obviously way beyond your setup. I, I know the site actually really well because we had helped a prior owner many, many years ago who looked to develop it. And so if I hadn't driven by it, I'd totally comfortable with it.
I'm totally fine.
I'm with the site and the, the, the straightforward meeting to.
Okay, is there anyone making a motion?
Yeah, I'm with the planning commission, who the special structures permit will allow the overall building height for the main residence on the north, south, east, and west elevation sixty, with a maximum level of height of thirty feet, up to forty-one feet six inches at 25 Isabella Avenue. As required findings can be met for the reasons enumerated in the staff report, subject to the conditions listed in the draft special structure.
Second? Please take the load. Anybody in favor?
Aye. I'll say aye and I hear another testimony. I have one on the site, I'll, I'll head to them.
Okay, so Eric, do you want to pick on?
Oh. All right, that's it. Item five D here to shoot removal on one thirty Britain.
The next item before you is a request for one heritage Chinese elm tree removal permit at one thirty Britain Avenue. An approximately one acre lot located near the intersection of Emily Avenue and Britain Avenue. There's an existing residence which is proposed to be demolished and a new site development, including main residence and accessory structures, are proposed. The requested heritage tree removal is for one twenty-four inch Chinese elm located just outside of the main building area, indicated as tree number eight on the provided site plan. The applicant's letter of request states that this side yard area is proposed to be the future location of a swimming pool due to its maximum sun exposure and to allow for the preservation of two existing healthy heritage magnolia trees on the opposite side of the lot. The existing Chinese elm location in a raised planter has damaged much of the existing patio flatwork around the tree due to its root growth. Sally Bent, the town arborist, inspected the tree and notes that due to the tree's current location in a raised planter, any site development and grave change around the tree could significantly damage the tree. In addition, the elm is showing early signs of a fungal disease, which were only worsened as the tree is stressed due to the site development. However, excuse me, the applicant's proposed replanting plan of two forty-eight inch box native oaks will introduce more native species on the property. The applicant will also be required to submit a landscape screening plan to the satisfaction of the town arborist to help visually screen the new site development. Staff has not received any neighbor comments. Based on these reasons, staff is supportive of the heritage tree removal request. The town arborist and I are available for any questions. The applicant is also here as well. Thank you.
Any questions to staff? All right, then, open the public hearing and here to the applicant first.
Hi, my name is Steve Simpson. I'm the architect. The project are the house, not the tree. Nothing to do with the tree. Thank you for your time looking at this. I'm sorry actually to burden you with it. We struggled with this tree a lot and I think the main reason we're here tonight before you is the location and mainly the fact that it was originally, I think planted when the house, the house that's there now is built, it's up in a raised bed and the Chinese elms have a really shallow root system. It's very invasive. And I, we just couldn't do anything around it. And we're just hoping that, given that it's a non-native, it's kind of, it was kind of, it was planted with the old house, that we can plant some new trees, some natives with the new development. The ones we're proposing for this tree are only probably a fraction of the trees that we'll end up planting when we actually end up, when we get the landscape plan and plant more trees. But beyond that, I think it's fairly straightforward and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. My client, John Knowles, here as well, if you have any questions for him.
Any questions? Anyone else here to talk? All right, good. I'll close the public hearing, bring you back to the board for consideration and action appropriate. So any, any comments or questions?
I think it's great, totally fair. I mean, if it's subject to, you know, screening, Sally, on what you're gonna look at, I think it's a very fair item, especially for a tree that's clearly out in a wrong spot.
Totally on board with that.
I visited the site. There are three Chinese elms there. One is green and lush and, unfortunately, it's swallowed over. The other two look like they're fairly alive.
Yeah.
And, and I, you know, they're just, I don't see any hope for, for either of them.
Yeah, I was, I was at the site also and if there had been more neighbors, they would have wondered, who is this guy jumping up and down outside of pants and trying to see?
Did this or not?
So I'm, I'm totally comfortable with this also. So I'll go ahead and, you know, look for a motion.
I move that the planning commission find the proposed removal of one heritage tree at one thirty Britain Avenue and Atherton would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan for the reasons outlined in the staff report and pretend that the commission approved the tree removal with the conditions stated in the draft heritage tree removal certificate.
Second? Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So it's passed as you naturally. Thank you for your way to do it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Just a, just a check in for me. Were items beginning already approved together here?
No, we can do that when we get there.
All right, so I'll make sure this is going to be there from the.
Yeah, I already checked with, there was one member of the public here and I spoke about it.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Good comment, yes.
All right, then, we will go ahead with item five C, which is the starting permit of a tree removal at one forty-two Britain Avenue, which made site visits very efficient.
Well, I am the, the planning commission's familiar with this site because you previously approved a special structures permit in a variance for the excessive height in the sidewalls for the main residence. And at this point, the applicant is requesting a special structures permit to allow a pool up to, in the side yard setback, as well as the removal of two magnolia trees. Detouch accessory structures are required to be ten feet from side and rear property lines unless they're located adjacent to a street, then it follows the same setback as required for the main dwelling. So in this situation, that would be a fifty-foot side yard. The existing pool is located in the same general areas where they would like to put the new pool. They want to reorient that a bit. They did look at other locations on the property and this one to them seemed the most logical, the best use of the sun. And the other parts of the property are, you know, already are planned to be approved with the garages in the house in different spaces. So the proposed pool and spa would be located eighteen feet six inches from the side property line and thirty-nine feet nine inches from the rear property line. The, the project does include a new six-foot tall wood fence and perimeter screening of the redwood hedge as well. And then the second part of the application is a request to remove two southern magnolia trees due to the location and the condition of the trees. And I can have Sally expand on this a bit, but she did note, based on a previous site inspection, that the trees have declined. These trees require more water. And given the, the recent drought and then also, you know, with the oak trees in close proximity, we're concerned about these trees. So if we were to try to revive them, we'd need a lot more water and that could impact the adjacent oak trees. So staff is supportive of the removal of these two trees and we do recommend replacement planting with three thirty-six inch box-sized native oak trees. Happy to answer any of your questions. The project architect is here as well.
No questions? No questions. All of the public hearing and here to the applicant. Project first.
Hi, I'm Jason Alden with Alden Architecture. I just wanted to add one more thing. We've been in communication with the, the neighbor who would be most affected to the northwest. They are closest to the pool and we've been sharing drawings with them and getting their feedback and they're completely on board with the location. As Lisa mentioned, the only other place for the pool would have been to the north, which would be right next to their property and they'd much prefer the existing location. And as well as the screening, we've been in communication with them as well, between our property and theirs, which the magnolia tree is, is part of that removal we'd be replacing in kind and they're all in favor of that.
Great.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on that? Then I'll go ahead and go, and close the public hearing and bring you back for discussion and action appropriate for it. Any, any comments?
I visited the site and both, one tree is, looks, it looks pretty good to me, only it's under two redwood trees that don't look so well. So I think that removing that tree would, would help the redwoods. And the other tree is not symmetric and it's, it's suffering from, from being where it is. So I, I think it's correct to take that out to save the oaks.
Good, same here. All right, and I read the site too and I didn't have to jump up and down to see it. So with that, then, I'll, I'll look for a motion. I approve that the planning commission approved the special structures permit for the pool. Side yard setback and pro heritage tree removal permit to allow removal of two heritage trees, one forty-two Britain Avenue, based on the findings listed in the staff report and subject to the conditions listed in the draft special structures permit and the draft heritage tree removal permit.
I second.
All right, read the second. All of them. Any other discussion? All right. Opposed? Neighbors say aye.
Aye.
No? Okay, four O, and Ashley. All right, very good. We'll, we'll look forward to the pool party.
Yes. Have a happy neighbor.
All right, thank you very much. All right, item five D, item five D, we're asking that it goes up for continuation to March twenty-third, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, so we'll, I'm gonna give a motion to, to twenty-third.
Would that the special structures permit for eighty-nine tall, tall wood cord here be moved to March twenty-third?
Second? Move to second. All those neighbors say aye?
Aye.
All right, then this, item five E is a special structures permit at five, uh, fifty-five Camino Porlos Arboles. For you, like I said. That's continued to March twenty-third. I need, any inclination, inclination of staff on that one that we need to? Is this a request for the applicant?
Request from the applicant. We are, both these items, you know, there was some complications. So it, we may need to renotice it. It may be that one involves a tree and the other one may involve some additional work, so we may be renoticing them anyway. But the applicant did request the extensions on both situations.
All right, so I need a motion on the other.
I move that we approve item E, special structures permits, fifty-five Camino Porlos Arboles.
Yeah, they're being, I'll see, I'll, I'll let you run that, so.
Accent. To move to the March twenty-third, twenty-sixteen.
All right, motion moving. Second? Move to second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, that's continued on. That's, then, thank you very much. And then commissioners report. Anything to report, anyone?
Not very good.
Exciting, that time off? Nice article, nice article on your family. Really nice article. Did you see that?
No.
I won't even charge you for that.
It was in, it was in Atherton Magazine and their family was highlighting it. Really nice article. I almost brought it in, but I didn't stop at all on the way home because I want to be here. I would have missed the video. All right, so, yeah, it's a very nice one. Really sweet, really sweet. It was on our whole family and had a picture on the front page and everything. Agent DeHarley, major. All right, any, all right, then, we'll go to staff reports. Anything to staff?
Sure, just to update that we did take the chicken ordinance to the city council. They're, they're having a hard time with it. I mean, I told them, you guys spent a lot of time studying it and you had a great recommendation. So they continued it. They're, they want to think about it a little more. I think they're having a hard time on the number of chickens. They're actually looking at lowering it possibly. So we'll have another day of that.
So is that, that they'll come back to us and then to the people?
No, they'll keep it. I mean, unless they kick it to you for further study, they can do that, but at this point, I think they're.
And given political pressure, which, like, how could this really be that difficult?
They spent a lot of time talking about it. Yeah. I think some of the commissioners have some concern that it's not really kind of appropriate for Atherton, that we're more estates now and we're not really country living and that it could impact property values. So there's kind of a mix.
Wow. I understand that there's some concern, that there's some misunderstanding about the chicken ordinance, that a lot of people seem to think that we're tightening the restrictions rather than loosening, you know, allowing more people to have, have chickens. And there are people who are, a, a lot of people seem to think that, that, I guess, they are under the impression that anybody can have a chicken right now and, and.
This will open the door because it'll publicize you. Or all you Jews out there just go ahead. Or all you compliant people, we'll, we'll teach you the new rule. All right.
Oh, my God.
We went through a process on it too, so they will too. So, yeah, I mean, it was an application process for us too, but, you know, we had a lot, we had interference than they did. Any, any other exciting news?
That's all I have.
Oh, man, that was nuts. That was, that was, that was brilliant. That was brilliant, said there, she's twenty-five minutes for us.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Anything on the town hall, new town hall? Anything that's going on? I know, I saw redesigned, but I.
Yeah, they're still working on, maybe Commissioner Tanelli can give an update at the next meeting because he's involved in all this. You know, every once in a while, I get the question of, well, we'd like to go a little taller. Can we change the ordinance for the height limit? What do you think about that? He's like, I don't like it. Meet the code, just like anybody else that comes into town. So they're still working on the design. I think there's a lot of conversation on the aesthetics.
I think it worked for you, or the check, too. All right, one other thing. Is there anything, so this is like the first maybe of the year, New Year's, but I have a new year. So is there anything that we need to know about for like the next six months, right?
anything that would be something that we just sort of have in our back of our head?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have, um, Cartan Field, they have not submitted the check for us to get going on that EIR again, so I don't have a date on that. And as far as large, I mean, we've just, we have a lot of projects through your next meeting, unfortunately, that, you know, we're gonna go through and make sure they're complete. But I don't have anything huge kind of pending.
Okay.
Uh, since Stephanie's on maternity leave, she did have a baby boy. Everybody's all good. Neil's...
She's my daughter, by accident, though.
Okay, it was early.
My daughters are doing two weeks, so...
Yeah. It came a little early. Um, but I have Neil working on the general plan, the traffic section, um, so we've got him kind of getting going on that to make sure the general plan update kind of keeps moving. Um, and Neil's spent a lot of time reviewing other jurisdictions' traffic studies and commenting on them on behalf of the town, so I thought that would be good, and, and to me, it's the most important one that we have to date. So he's working on that.
Good, that's a good review.
Yeah.
All right, anything else, Simpson?
Given that you showed up last time in an app in a costume, I thought in February you showed up, you would show up as a Valentine.
I, I, I was, I was...
I'm trying to keep you guessing.
Easter bunny, oh, there you go. Okay, you don't have to celebrate March. I'll never bring up your articles again. All right. All right, all right, all right, I'll read back to some of this, so... Go to adjournment. I don't, it's so, it's such a tough one all the time. Move to seconded, all those in favor say aye? Aye, aye, okay, we're out of here.